I would like to welcome you to our May 25, 2023 City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices at this time. With that, I'll call this council meeting to order. Could we please stand together for our invocation? It's good to have Pastor Leonard Thompson here from Heart Cry Chapel. Please remain standing after he finishes the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you pray with me, please? Lord God, we petition you tonight on behalf of this city, its council, first responders, management, and staff. We ask you for their safety, their protection, and carrying out their responsibilities, and for godly wisdom in overseeing their God-given authority. We pray that these leaders would seek and depend on you for wisdom to lead this city and to govern morally, ethically. We pray their decisions will be made with integrity, honesty, and based on principles already established by your word. We pray over this city and the people who reside here, and we ask for your favor and blessings of faith and freedom to prevail over all spiritual darkness that would seek to disrupt and divide. And most of all, Lord God, we acknowledge you as Creator, Giver, and Sustainer of life now and forever. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thompson. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Colby Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Here.
Thank you very much. Madam Manager, do we have any agenda updates that you would like to bring to our attention at this time?
Yes, please. I need to move Consent Agenda Item B to public hearings, and I'd like to ask if the city council can act, move the acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report immediately after the presentation from our auditors.
And it will be so. Council Action Item Number One will be moved on after that presentation. At this time, we have a presentation of the Employee of the Month by Joshua Johnson.
Good evening, Joshua Johnson, Roads, Stormwater, Traffic Supervisor. Good evening, citizens, council, team members. At this moment, I would like to introduce to you our April 2023 Superstar of the Month, Mr. Mark Karsha. Mark is our crew lead for the Traffic Department, and let me tell you what a great leader he is. Mark always puts the city's best interests first and foremost. He provides a safe and healthy work environment for his coworkers. He manages the city's resources and plans for the future of the Traffic Department flawlessly. Mark is so dedicated to cost-effective, open government that he took it upon himself while visiting Osceola County's Traffic Department to inquire about some street sign blanks he noticed sitting off in the distance, and with his due diligence and attention to detail, Mark hit the jackpot. Mark was able to save the city of St. Cloud an astonishing amount of money, over $20,000 to be exact, acquiring these sign blanks through Osceola County Traffic versus a private vendor, and is able to incorporate these sign blanks into the ongoing change from the green street name signs to the blue street name signs with the official city bird, the St. Hill Crane, which I might say adds character and charm throughout the city as well. Mark sets such a great example for the city, his coworkers, and myself. Thank you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed, and we appreciate you. Congratulations, Mark, for your accomplishments.
And in recognition of your recognition, we have a plaque and a special letter. And would you like to say something?
Um, you got me on fire. Um... Just step back, real quick. It definitely wasn't just me. It was definitely a team effort, you know, my supervisors, my bosses, and a lot of people in financing and all that. So, I mean, it definitely wasn't just me, but we all had a big part in this. So, thank you, guys, too.
Thank you. Good. Here we go. There you go.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have a presentation by Tim Westgate and Matthew Gano regarding the ACFR Financial Reporting for the City of St. Cloud for the year 2021 through 22. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city management as well. We are here to present this evening the results, as mentioned, of the annual comprehensive financial report audit for September 30, 2022, which I believe you all have a copy of or had received a digital copy of. Quick introductions. My name is Tim Westgate, Audit Partner on the Engagement. Matt Gano is the Senior Audit Manager on the Engagement. Also pictured there is Mr. Michael Sandstrom, and he oversees the IT aspect of the engagement, but wasn't able to join us this evening. We are the leadership team for the audit. There are more auditors involved in the process. We're just here this evening to present to you. Before we get into the particulars of this year's audit results, I wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge the city's participation in the GFOA. That's a Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The award does not come from us, but rather is a notable financial reporting accomplishment of the city that we like to highlight. The GFOA established the program to encourage and assist state and local governments to go above and beyond the minimum standards, beyond those requirements, in a spirit of transparency and full disclosure to include additional introductory section information, statistical data, extra disclosures, extra reporting models, to achieve that goal of additional transparency and disclosure. The city has met those requirements and received the award for over 20 years receiving that certificate. Reports that are submitted to the program are reviewed by experts in the industry with the GFOA, as well as those in the public sector, those in academia. Other independent accountants review those reports to award the certificate. So, your report for 2021 received that certificate, again, the highest form of recognition in the industry for external financial reporting, and we anticipate that the 2022 will also meet those requirements and receive the award as well. So, we like to recognize the city in doing that. Moving into this year, these financial statements do meet your external financial statement reporting requirements that fall under Florida statutes, rules of the Florida Auditor General, as well as requirements for secondary bond markets, direct lenders with the city like the Florida DEP, loans and direct placement bank debt, as well as your federal and state granting agencies that you participate with. The first section here on your presentation and the main thing that you want to see from your auditors is the Independent Auditor's Report. To save from flipping all 150-some pages, we just have the presentation to highlight. The main report is the Independent Auditor's Report. That would be found on Page 1. The report talks about reminders that management is responsible for the financial statements. Management is responsible for internal control. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion based on our audit. We're pleased to say we issued an unmodified opinion. That is a clean opinion, highest level of assurance that you could obtain on financial statements. The next bullet point section on the presentation, as part of our audit, we look at internal control related to financial reporting and would report back to you. There's a separate report in the back around Page 131, and that would talk about if we encountered material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to financial reporting. We're pleased to comment that as far as material weaknesses, internal control, it is a clean report. There is a discussion item back there related to noncompliance, and that is an ongoing related to the DSD bonds and related issues with that. Hopefully, that will be going away and final answers very soon. We'll touch on that briefly later in the presentation. Some of the other reports that come from the auditors. There's an audit report related to compliance with Section 218, 415. That is related to your investment policy and the city's compliance with Florida statutes for investment of funds. In our opinion, the city did comply with the requirements of that statute. At the end of the reporting package is a management letter that is issued under Rules of the Auditor General, required for cities for matters such as deteriorating financial condition or financial emergency, other items in that regard, or recommendations for improvement of financial management. We're pleased that as well is a clean report. There are some discussion items in there, again, just related to the Stevens Plantation closeout process. Last section of auditor's report before I hand it over to Matt. The city participates in federal awards, as you know, recognizing about 5.7 million of expenditures, of federal awards during the year. Of course, when you receive those funds, there's always extra strings attached to it, additional compliance requirements, and one of those is the federal single audit. And with that, we look at major programs and the compliance requirement to determine if the city complied. The major program for the year was about $5 million of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and we're pleased to report that, in our opinion, the city did comply with those federal reporting requirements, and as well, no findings reportable conditions related to those grants. So, I'll let Matt touch on a few other highlights.
Just to kind of recap some of the financial highlights, just high level, I went forward to Slide 7. So, here is actually some of the significant changes related to the governmental funds for the current, or for the year ending September 30, 2022. The first column there shows the individual governmental funds, followed by the change in fund balance, and then the last item there, last column there, is the ending fund balance. You can see the governmental, or your general fund balance increased roughly $3.8 million in the current year. Overall, revenues all over were up from the previous year, but a large chunk of that is related to the $5 million in the ARPA funds that was previously mentioned that was recognized into the general fund in the current year. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund is roughly $10 million, which does meet the city's fund balance policy of 12.5% of expenditures. So, the general fund overall is in pretty good shape. You can see the mobility fund's the only one that had a negative change in fund balance, and that's just all the ongoing projects that are starting to get off the ground during the current year that were transferred for the Capital Projects Fund. This slide here shows your proprietary funds. Overall, the proprietary funds were in fairly good shape. You can see the last item there, the last column there is your working capital, which is your ability for those individual funds to meet their current liabilities, given their current asset balances. All of those are positive working capital balances, with the exception of the DSD for Stevens Plantation. The last item, or last kind of section there is your fiduciary funds, which is your pension plans. That did have a change in net position in the current year of $22.8 million, and essentially that's unrecognized losses on investments. We saw that at all the various cities that had all these investment plans, so that's not an exception. It was kind of just due to the market conditions, along with your own personal 401K plans and such that you may have. Everybody saw a downturn, given the market conditions in the current year. The general fund and the police still have roughly a 75% to 85% funded balance, though, so they're still in fairly strong position. This slide shows some of the audit matters, and most of these are actually mentioned in a separate unbound letter that we also issue as a part of our audit that is addressed to communication with those charged with governance. One of the significant accounting policies that were adopted in the current year was related to a new GASB pronouncement, GASB 87, related to leases. This essentially required the city to book a receivable for all leases, whether they were previously operating leases or not, onto the books, and a deferred inflow related to that. So, that had an effective $6.6 million for the city to be recognized in the current year. The next item there just mentions the significant audit adjustments that occurred in the current year. There was two of them. One was an entry to correct the unrecognized revenue related to the ARPA funds and to transfer fund balance, or transfer account of $2.4 million, and then an audit entry for $517,000 related to the unbilled revenues in the sanitation fund. The last item there is just the Toho, and if you look at the letter, there's a little bit more detail on that particular comment where we list some bullet points, and essentially we just recommend that the city review the process and the accounting to ensure a smooth transition as Toho kind of takes over that management aspect. Also in the letter, we would also require to disclose to you if there was any disagreements with management or any difficulties that are encountered in performing the audit. Happy to say that we did not have any of those that are mentioned in the letter, so that's good. So, here's list some of the recommendations, and Tim touched on this briefly earlier. Now, we do have other discussion items during the course of the audit that we bring up to management that are just considered discussion items for process improvements and other areas of concern or areas to be looked at. This is the only item that's actually a written comment in the current year, and this comment actually goes back several years related to the Stevens Plantation. Even with the, most of the, with the property being sold in the current year, still need to ensure that the fund can meet all of its current obligations or how those obligations are addressed before this comment can be removed going forward. So, with our discussions with management, we're hoping that this can be addressed in this current year that you're in for the 23-year. Also in the letter, this, and this slide, shown on this slide are just some future upcoming accounting pronouncements, not going to go into detail, but the first one there mentioned the GASB 96 related to subscription-based software arrangements. That will likely affect the city. We've been discussing that with the city over the past several years to get them up and ready, and they have already addressing that, so that shouldn't be an issue for the city to implement for the 23-year. Before, I'm sorry, before you answer any questions, if anybody does have any questions, I just want to take a second just to thank the Finance Department. They have to put up with us for all the days and weeks that we come out here and all the questions that we ask, as well as the rest of the city management. We do talk with the city manager and other departments as well while we come here, but finance is the one that has to put up with us the most. We do want to thank them for their, all their due diligence in putting up with us. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any particular questions related to the audit.
Well, we'd certainly like to thank Purvis and Gray for the thorough and professional job you always do, and certainly like to thank our city staff and our Finance Department especially for the professional and quality work that you guys do. It's nice to work with guys that do such an excellent job on our staff. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? I see none, so we just thank you very much once again for presenting us a good report. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. If you do have comments, please come forward, and you will state your name. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Jeff Shepler? Is that? If you state your name and address?
Yes. My name is Jeff Shepler. I live at 2209 Spring Lake Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my wife, and my parents, Lloyd and Nancy Shepler, who own the house at 2191 Spring Lake Circle. It has not been uncommon for us to hear noise coming from the concrete plant located at 2270 Hickory Tree Road, immediately south of Moshmire Concrete. The noise seems to be a machine crushing concrete into smaller pieces, and the amplified ringing of an air hammer knocking out dried concrete out of a cement truck drum, and lots of times that's on Sunday morning, early. Also, just something for you to think about, how did they get away with not having to have a wall like Moshmire Concrete? Then I would like to speak about issues with Thompson Grove, located at east of 192 and Narcusi Road. At neighborhood meetings with Mr. Thompson, the City St. Cloud Planning Department, and our neighborhood, representatives from the city planning department told us they were taking notes of our meetings concerning issues we discussed. It was my understanding that the berm along the west side of Thompson Grove would be at least three feet above the finished grade from the north end of the property to the south end. The berm may be three feet at the north end, but it is nowhere near three feet above finished grade at the south end. Also, there was our understanding there would be no two-story houses along the west side of the property. There are two-story houses. The fence that's supposed to be on the berm ends behind my parents' house, and it's not even on the berm there, and behind my house, there is no fence, and we've been having to deal with trash blowing in. And just the other day, I saw two young men walking down towards the retention pond, looking in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard, and I could see the wheels turning in their head. How do I get over there to that tennis court that's in my neighbor's backyard? We didn't have any, oh, and then on top of it, just the other day, one of our neighbors caught on the security camera at 3:14 in the morning someone checking cars in our neighborhood to see if they were unlocked. We didn't have any issues with anything like that, not that I'm aware of, until Thompson Grove people moved in and construction happened there, and the bus started coming to Narcusi and 192. A while back, oh, the other thing with that is we've had to deal with noise from construction workers, their music playing loud, as well as their trash blowing. Had the fence been in place, as it was supposed to be, from the north end to the south end, we wouldn't be dealing with that trash. A while back, we received notice about the annexation of Live Oak Lake HOA into the city. The notice said something about coming to the city clerk's office to read the documentation. I'm sorry. Can I send a letter?
You sure can.
Send us all in a letter to everybody here?
If you'll do that, please.
Yeah, because I make responses on it.
I'd like to ask our city manager if you'll make sure and take some appropriate action to some of the concerns that have been addressed here.
I think some of those concerns can be addressed because we've looked into them. The two-story houses, the final ordinance that was approved by the city council did not include a restriction for the two-story houses. It did not include the fence either. However, the planning staff has been reaching out to the builder and asking them to please put that in because it was something that was discussed during the meeting. I don't think they've had any response. They're shaking their head, so they haven't had any responses from the builder.
They've not responded to you.
Right? And regarding the concrete crushing business, there is an active code enforcement case that if, I don't know if Mr. Manzares would want to say anything about that.
Well, it is active, and there is a fine accruing on that property. And to answer the question as to why they were not required to put a fence there, and it's not a permitted, their operation was not permitted on that site, so they're basically operating without a permit, and that's why we...
But they have an active case to come forward for rezoning that'll be on a future city council agenda that...
We'll get to address that issue then. Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah. Can I ask a question on that code enforcement case? I mean, so is there some timeline that it gets escalated, like they get a chain and lock the gates, or, I mean, or...
We don't have authority to do that under code enforcement. There's a fine that is accruing on the property. The city staff went in front, went to the special magistrate, asked the special magistrate to increase the amount of the fine. The special magistrate deferred it for a period of, I believe, for a period of 60 days, and asked to come back and see what, how the respondent was going to respond to it. So, right now, there is a fine accruing on the property, and there is a lien on the property, but short of that, we can't just simply go out there and try to padlock anything and keep them from accessing the property.
There's no legal process?
Well, there is. We could probably, we could probably look further into trying to proceed with a, with some sort of a legal action with an injunction, but as Mrs. Miller pointed out, this site was in front of the city council back in January 2022 with regard to potential permit on it, and it will be coming back in front of you very shortly. So, where the property owner is going to come back in and ask for the permitted, permission to basically do what they're doing. So, in reality, that probably would work. That time frame is probably a lot shorter than any litigation that the city would be able to successfully pursue during, by then, so we anticipate that this will be back in front of you as, in July.
All right. That'll be an interesting meeting, then. Would anyone else like to speak to the council during the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move to our next item on our agenda, which is our Consent Agenda. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Manzares?
As the city manager asked, we, do you need the approval?
Oh, yeah, skip over. I'm sorry. Let me back up. I had it, don't even read my notes here. I'd like to ask Madam Clerk if you'll please read into the record Council Action Item Number 1 regarding the acceptance of the annual financial report that was just presented by Purvis and Gray.
Request for City Council's acceptance of the city's annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for fiscal year 2021, 2022, as presented by Purvis Gray &amp; Company, LLC, Independent Auditors.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Could I entertain a motion by council? Motion to approve. We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert, second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And it so carries. Now, we will return to our Citizens Forum. I've already, any next portion of tonight's meeting, Consent Agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and uncontroversial, if anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the Consent Agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Would like to also just make you aware again that Item B is not on the Consent Agenda now. It has been moved to public hearing Item Number 5. Like to ask the council, are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you're wanting to address individually? If not, we'll receive any comment. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the Consent Agenda? If not, we will have discussion and/or motion by council. Could I have a motion for the adoption of the Consent Agenda? Motion to approve. We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye. The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Brings us to Item Number 1. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
First reading and introduction for Ordinance Number 2023-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 4.08 acres identified as Davis Island from MHA City, Manufactured Mobile Home Annexation, and MH2 City Residential, Manufactured Mobile Home to a R3 Multi-Family Dwelling City zoning designation located on 2256 Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation... commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date.
Good evening, council, mayor, Dagmar Isagara, deputy director. This item in front of you is for the rezoning of a property as stated by the clerk located at 2256 Missouri Avenue, and it is, staff recommends approval. The background on this property, the existing future land use designation of this property is medium density residential. The existing zoning is, for this property is a combination of MHA and MH2. They're both manufactured mobile homes. One of them is in a designation that is adopted directly from the county. The proposed rezoning on this property is R3, which allows up to multifamily dwellings that cannot exceed the existing density. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts into the city facilities. These are the residential development regulations for the zoning districts, the MHA and MH2. They have the same criteria as for minimum site area and minimal lot width and gross for, score footage for the dwelling. The R3 allows a single-family duplexes, multifamily, and cluster development, and it has a range of site area and lot width amongst them. At this time, we have not received any concept plans from the, from the applicant. In regards to the density, as previously stated, there is MDR, which is median density, based on the total net developer area of the lots is 4.08. The maximum density in MDR is 10 dwelling units per acre. That means that the maximum that, in that density will be 40 dwelling units per acre. Of course, that's not taking into consideration the requirements of the infrastructure and ponds and such, and all these other things. The potential number of lots by the current zoning in comparison to the proposed zoning is approximately 24 to 25 units if it remains mobile homes, and R3 up to 30 lots. That's a difference of about six units in between the two zoning designations, or the three zoning designations. It meets the strategic goals of growth management. DRC, our staff recommends approval ordinance 2023-23. At the planning commission, they also recommended approval, and it is requested from the city council per the 16 findings of section 3.43 to approve ordinance 2023-23. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, council members. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. The subject property was involuntarily annexed into the city some time ago, and as staff noted, assigned the mobile home zoning district designation. As it is today, development of the property could only occur with mobile homes. So our request tonight is essentially to preserve compliance with the comprehensive plan, preserve the compliance with the already existing future land use, future land use designation of medium density residential, and also would allow us a variety of uses, including single-family detached duplex and townhome units, all of which would require a preliminary subdivision plan that would come back before the council. So you'd be able to see, you know, lot sizes, dimensions, the form of the subdivision. So we respectfully ask your consideration of staff's recommendation of approval, the planning commission's recommendation of approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll stand aside for just a moment. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Any discussion? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this first reading?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And it passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read item number two into the record.
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-001R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for vehicle for hire in the HB Highway Business Zoning District on the 5.84 acres known as Personal Mini Storage, generally located east of Florida's Turnpike, west of Old Canoe Creek Road, and south of Continental Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening. Once again, Dagmar Isagara, deputy director, community development. This item in front of you is a conditional use for a property located as stated by the city clerk, east of the Turnpike, west of Old Canoe Creek Road, and south of Continental, Continental Street, sorry. The total land area is 5.8, and is a recommendation of staff of approval of resolution 2023-001. The background information on the property is zone highway business. The future land use currently is commercial, and the proposed conditional use is for vehicles for hire. The development is, the request is a conditional use in the highway business, and it has no adverse impacts on the city's facilities. As you can see, this is a future land use map and is only representation of the area. And this is the site image of currently what is on site. As currently, the property is used as a storage unit. The, part of the conditions of approval to the conditional use is to limit the amount of vehicles that are going to be parked at anyone's time on the front of the property on the additional excess parking areas indicated on the, on the slide in front of you. The maximum total of vehicles that are going to be permitted at any which time will be six, which it will mean, it would be in compliance with the excess parking of the area. In addition, in addition to that, staff is also recommending approval with the condition that the landscaping along Old Hickory, I believe this whole, Old Hickory Tree, Old Canoe Creek, sorry, Old Canoe Creek Road be enhanced and be, and whatever gaps there is existing, that they will refurbish that, those areas to mitigate the impact of any vehicles. It meets the strategic goals of growth management, and I'm going to read the four conditions of approval per staff. The approval of the request of conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan as a site plan. Any vehicle not in current use shall not block or obstruct the internal drive aisles. The rental vehicles shall only be parked in the excess spaces at the front and rear of the property and shall not exceed a total of six vehicles. And for number four, addition of landscape buffer to, for the office parking area, an area to the east of building A and the full length of the property fronting Canoe Creek Road to a visible improvement as depicted in exhibit C of the resolution. Planning Commission recommended approval of the resolution with, without, with the, with the conditions stated by staff in adding condition number four, and is requested by the city council to approve the resolution 23-001 with the conditions stated by staff. That concludes my presentation. I'll be, I'll be able to ask, what is wrong with me today? I am so sorry. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dagmar Isagara. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, council. Sean Hendel, Hanson Walton Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, representing the applicant or the owner, and available to answer any questions you may have. We're in agreement with the staff's recommendations. We've provided a concept landscape plan for you for increasing the landscaping. Just a little history, we had designed Canoe, it was Kissimmee Park at the time, Old Canoe Creek Road, and when they purchased some additional right-of-way, they were supposed to plant the landscaping back, but as part of the value engineering during construction, they took the landscaping out of the plan. So that's why some of the landscaping that used to be there is not there. The owner's willing to put all that back and bring it up to code. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. If you, we'll be ready in case we do. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this resolution? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that brings us to item number three. Could you please read that into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-103R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a place of worship in the CBD-1 Central Business District 1 zoning district on a .16 parcel of land located on the southeast corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and 11th Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. The case before you tonight is for a request for a place of worship at the southeast corner of Pennsylvania and 11th Street, known as Iglesia Fuente de Agua Viva, St. Cloud, Inc. The property is zone Central Business District 1. I would like to note that when the public notices went out, there was an error on the public notice. It identified the site as Central Business District 2 instead of 1. The future land use is commercial. A place of worship requires a conditional use permit in the CBD 1 zoning districts. Staff reviewed this request and found that it had no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the commercial land use and CBD 1 zoning district for context. The applicant intends to use the subject property as a place of worship. Services will be held on Wednesday nights and Sunday mornings. The location has a maximum capacity of 198 people, and the applicant has confirmed that there would be about 60 to 70 people in attendance during their hours of operation. The land development code does not have any parking requirements for businesses located in the Central Business District 1, and there have been concerns raised about the 750-foot distance separation requirements for a church to a, an alcoholic beverage establishment. However, 3.20.11D of our land development code eliminates the separation requirements in CBD 1. Okay, this request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management, and staff has reviewed this request for conditional use on or before April 27th. Staff recommends approval of resolution 2023-103R for a conditional use based on the 16, sorry, based on the six factual matters identified in the land development code. And since the publication of the staff report, we have received one additional written objection from the downtown business group. Prior to that, we did receive one verbal objection at the planning commission meeting and two other letters of objection. It is requested that council approve this request, and at this time, staff is available for questions, and the applicant is also present and available for questions.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to speak to this request? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello to all of you. My name is Jose Manuel Hernandez. I live in 3020 Cambridge Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. I feel very, very happy to get here in this, in this moment. I just would like to say that we are already, already here in St. Cloud right now. We're meeting in a mobile home in 909 10th Street, St. Cloud, Florida. It's a mobile home from the St. Cloud Baptist Lutheran Church. We have created a great relationship with them. We are requesting this, this place because we have been growing. We started in Agassibo, in Lakefront Park, in St. Cloud, with five people, and God has been amazing with us. And little by little, we have started to grow, and that's why we, we are requesting this place. At the same time, we're helping families in St. Cloud. Sometimes people ask, how does a, a church helps? We help through a lot of ways, but specifically, I think the mental, the mental part, the spiritual part of a person that comes inside a, a church could be with difficult situations going through in, in their mind or in their life. When a person gets to our church, the testimony has been that people have literally rise, and, and that's why we're here. We have been also helping the necessities of the people here in St. Cloud. We have been giving backpacks, different kinds of dynamics, and it's going to be a blessing to be here in this place that we're requesting. So God bless you, and nice meeting you, council, today.
Thank you. If you'll stay, and here's a front, because we have any questions. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this? We will see public comments this time. Robert Beauchamp.
I dropped off some paperwork to...
Your time's not up. We're going to let you keep talking.
That was quick, wasn't it? I don't know if they were going to ask if it was okay. I just passed something out. It was just something from the planning commission and a couple of pictures I took.
Yeah, you can pass that out.
If you guys were allowed to have it, just a look over. It's nothing outrageous about it.
If you'll state your name and address for the record?
Robert Beauchamp, 231 Wyoming Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for your time. First, I would like to make you aware of information that was given to the planning commission that I attended on May 16, 2023, to make the recommendation to council. There was discussion of the building, the location, the zoning, and the commission has also shown information on additional off-street parking for potential parking spaces with a parking agreement that showed about 40 parking spaces located at 1110 and 1120 Pennsylvania Avenue. Thirty-four of the spaces located in 1120 Pennsylvania Avenue were not available for extra parking, and a letter was sent to the city manager the next day by the owner of the property. So the only extra parking space would be a maximum of seven parking spaces to be used only on Sundays and Wednesdays after 7:00 PM for a term of one year. I feel that this inaccurate information on parking was given to the commission affected the decision made that night. Parking was discussed in great detail, but was found not to be of impact because of the inaccurate additional parking agreement. With this in mind, I would ask council not to use this inaccurate planning commission recommendation, but use your best judgment after hearing from the applicant and the downtown business owners tonight. If I may give my thoughts, I feel parking has always been an issue downtown and always will be until a parking structure is built. Adding the St. Cloud Hotel when finished, along with city employee parking, as the city grows, will only make it worse. This is a parking problem, not a place of worship problem. I feel that this is why the applicant was proactive in getting extra private parking for his application. We all know why downtown is so attractive for a business that needs large-scale parking. There are no parking requirements in the CBD 1 business district. If a place of worship with a maximum occupancy of 198 people is stated on the planning commission staff report and already posted at 1101 Pennsylvania Avenue and site were allowed, even with four people per car, it would take 50 parking spaces. I counted, and there are only 60 parking spaces on all of Pennsylvania Avenue between 10th Street and 12th Street, including parking on 11th Street from alleyway to alleyway. Where do our customers park? The pastor spoke to the commission and said he would have 60 to 70 people in attendance at first. When asked what would he do if he outgrew the space, he said, "I will hold more services." What an impact this would have on parking for the other businesses. After 39 years of having my business in downtown, I've seen other places of worship ask to come into the downtown, and all other past councils saw the impact. Could I please have a couple of seconds, sir? More, sir?
Wrap it up real quick, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Other past councils saw the impact that this would have on existing business and voted no. I'm asking the council to please look at the investment that cities made in the downtown and the direction you foresee the small downtown area, which is the heart of our city becoming. To Pastor Hernandez, you said you wanted to do many good things for the downtown. I believe you, but please consider the businesses and their families you will be affecting. Is your thought of doing good at the... Is your thought of doing good at the price of other good people trying to make a living for themselves and their families? In closing, the downtown has had three hard years with COVID and construction, and some businesses did not make it. I ask the council, please do not make it worse by approving this or any other conditional use that could cause harm to the downtown business area because of mass parking needs. This is a small downtown with mainly mom-and-pop businesses. Instead, help Pastor Hernandez find a more suitable location. I feel he will do good things, but please not in already saturated downtown.
Thank you.
And one final statement from you, Mr. Mayor. I guess for you, because you are a pastor. Can you imagine the impact if you asked your congregation to find parking in the surrounding areas if you didn't have any parking spaces for them? Thank you guys very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry to go over.
Thank you, Robert. Fay Bott? You may have got to come to the microphone if you're going to speak.
Yes, I will.
Got to come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Fay Anita Bott, and my address is 1006 Pennsylvania Avenue here in St. Cloud. I don't want to rehash a lot of what Bob said, but we do want to drive home the point that downtown St. Cloud has been striving for decades to become a destination, eat, shop, local. And as you said, other places of worship or businesses of this type have applied to become a part of the downtown area and have been denied. There's reasons for all that. But yes, we do definitely want to hammer home the issue of parking. It is a drag. It's a logistical nightmare, and we have many events downtown. Huge one every month on a Wednesday night, and then a couple of really big ones every year on a weekend. That does include Sundays. And of course, if FAV grows, which I hope they will, it's only going to become worse. So there are other issues involved here, but we're just going to stick to really what the major impact would be, and it's parking. And I really feel too that city council should consider imposing a moratorium on businesses that want to come to downtown that would require high-impact parking. So I want to say thank you for your time, and thank you for everything that you do for our city, especially our historical downtown area.
Thank you, Ms. Bott. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Joel Davis, 109 Orange Avenue. Good evening, mayor, councilpeople. First off, Representative Stark apologizes for not being here this evening to read the letter into the record from the St. Cloud Main Street Program. She has a conflict up in Orlando. So if I could ask it, that gets read into the record. Secondly, one of the big questions that I have is, as I understand, the city ordinance, if you were to have an existing place of worship, someone cannot open an establishment selling alcohol within 750 feet of that. I've heard that this isn't going to affect the existing businesses. Obviously, there's quite a few of them that are within the 750-foot radius of this project. But a bigger question I have is, what happens if someone wants to open up a new business within that radius? Are they going to be blocked out by this? That seems to really undermine the whole point of having the entertainment district. Or if one of the existing businesses closes, is a new business going to be able to come back into that even existing location and open and sell alcohol? So if I could maybe ask those two things, please.
Okay, you have any other questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Manzares, could you speak to the alcohol issue?
I'll turn my light off.
I'm sorry.
The provision that Mr. Davis is referring to is in the city code, it's 320.11 of the city's LDC. It not only addresses existing locations that serve alcohol, which is what it is, it has to do with the 750-foot with regard to sale of alcohol, restricting alcohol as it relates to not only places of worships, but schools, daycares, and those facilities, too. It also has a language in the code for the CBD-one that any use that is permitted under the city code, and all restaurants and bars are permitted as a matter of right in the CBD-one, any use that is permitted does not have to comply with that. So it is perspective as to anybody that wants to come forward and open up a business that is permitted in the CBD-one. So it would not affect any future applications.
Thank you very much. Melissa?
Hi, good evening again. I would like to address two things. When this item went to Planning Commission and at the distribution of the staff report, our staff member was under the impression that there was a parking agreement between the owners on the property, but it turned out there was a written agreement between the two tenants that the city is not party to and does not recognize. And then regarding the resolution, there was an amendment made to the resolution removing the language referencing that parking agreement. So we completely removed Section Three of the resolution, and I believe we sent that up to the city clerk's office already.
Thank you. Mr. Manzares, once again, I'd like to ask, are there any restrictions that the city can impose on a religious establishment regarding parking? If we were to prove this conditional?
In this instance, no, there are not, because this whole district does not have requirements for off-street parking for any potential use. So that's part of the district. Nobody has, no use downtown has to have these parking requirements. So the discussion at the Planning Zoning Commission, which it was, I agree, I watched the meeting. I wasn't there, but I watched it. There was a lot of discussion regarding the parking. The reason why, in our view, was able to move forward is the parking issue is not relevant to the determination that's before you because parking is not required for any use in the downtown area, and that's part of the restriction issue. The other thing that is probably most significant about this particular, the particular request here is that the federal law prohibits the city council from treating unequally places of worships from other particular use. So under your current city code, there are similar permitted uses that could go into the downtown area that arguably would have a similar parking requirement, similar assemblage requirements that do it. So you can't treat this use any different than those, otherwise it would violate the federal law with regard to religious land use protection rights. And so there are several in your existing code, and which is one of the reasons why staff has recommended approval. By way of example, civic clubs, which are nonprofit assemblages, are permitted in this area. Schools are permitted in this area. So if you were going to focus on this particular activity being a place of worship, that would be directly in violation of the federal law with regard to the Religious Land Use Protection Act, and which is a reason why, one of the reasons why staff is not focusing on this as a place of worship and is simply recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. I have a letter on behalf of St. Cloud Main Street, and I was wondering if, as their board liaison, if I could read that into the record.
You may do that.
Says, "City council members, please accept this letter as opposition to the approval for change of use request on 1101 Pennsylvania Avenue. In 2021, St. Cloud Main Street, in conjunction with the City of St. Cloud, worked diligently on creating an entertainment district in our downtown. The district was designed to improve community participation through economic development. Creating environments that would increase business opportunities for downtown is vital to future success for everyone. We need to be diligent in how we approach these avenues created to reflect that very opportunity. Our historic beginnings included places of worship. Even then, they weren't in the core downtown, but on the fringes of downtown. We support and celebrate our history through our historic churches, but they remain on the outside of the district. We believe this tradition should remain for the betterment of all involved." Council question, with an entertainment district in place, how will it be district with no other bar-related business will now be able to come into the area based on the 750-feet rule? I believe that was just addressed, so...
Right.
If we use current criteria to deny our entities based on certain factors, why would this be any different? Treat everyone with the same respect and same guidelines to create healthy businesses and community environments? Respectfully, St. Cloud Main Street. And I would just like to say, aside from the letter, it's definitely, this is a difficult case here. To the city attorney's point, we can't treat this unequally for many other business, but my question is, if another business was going to come into the downtown area and it was going to have a detrimental economic effect on another business, we would also probably have a problem with that as well. So that would just be my comment on it. Let the rest of the council discuss.
Mr. Manzares?
And I would just comment, I appreciate Mr. Urban's comments on that. The uniqueness about this is there is a federal law that protects places, houses of worships and places of worship. So it makes it, it makes it, as I said, unique and much more of a difficult thing. If another business comes in that is doing something different that doesn't have the benefit of this federal legislation protecting religious places of worship, then you might be having a different discussion on those issues. That's what we're up, that's what we're dealing with here.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. This, I struggled with this one as well, and I had a lot of conversation with the city manager for months with this leading up to it and the attorney, and just, you know, when you're told there's a federal law protecting places of religious worship, and you can't put any other conditions on it, you kind of don't have much that you can do. Several of the people that got up and spoke said that previously, maybe this federal rule is new? I don't know. How did it come previously before city council and got shot down?
I don't specifically recall a particular one that I'm aware of that was shut down. I will tell you that in the last, probably last 10 years, the federal cases have become much more supportive of this federal law. And specifically, we are in the 11th Circuit of Federal Courts. 11th Circuit is the most strict when it comes to the strict application of this. There are some cases out of South Florida that dealt with synagogues specifically in the downtown entertainment area for particular, the town of Sunrise, where the court came in and when specifically, under some of the arguments you have heard, maybe not tonight, but you've heard beforehand with regard to the preservation of an entertainment district, where the court specifically rejected those. And that is law that has evolved more specifically probably over the last 10 to 12 years, dealing with it. And so it has become more of a forefront for the courts to deal with it.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges moving forward is if the church goes into this place, then probably most people that are looking for a spot aren't going to realize that there's this exemption because of how it came into existence and that 750 doesn't relate. And so, you know, potentially, we're going to have people not come downtown because they're going to think they can't. I mean, I think that's a challenge, but I'm not really sure what our options are here, except I wanted to ask Mr. Manzares, if we approve this conditional use, can we put a one-year timeframe on it to reevaluate it? I mean, because we put that on other conditional uses.
You certainly can. However, I think that would subject the city to some exposure. Again, we are not talking about other uses. It involves, specifically involves a place of worship, and it has special protection under the federal law.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Gilbert?
City attorney, so what you're saying is feds beat state and city?
Yes.
Yes, I didn't finish up with a public comment. You're welcome to speak, Laura.
Thank you so much. Laura Koncevich at 1036...
Step up closer to the mic, if you will.
Sorry. Laura Koncevich, 1036 Pennsylvania Avenue. I just had a question. If it was related, this particular law or rule was related to tenants or was related to property owners?
It's related to use.
Okay, thank you very much.
Doesn't matter who owns it, who's doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience that hasn't spoke like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Gloria Rogers, 1212 Love of the Street. My thing is, I understand that there's, you know, protection for them, but we've worked so hard with our businesses down here that they come in, they take up all the parking. Our Wednesday night monthly market will be ruined, and for a lot of us, that pays our rent for the month so that we can survive, you know, with our profits for the rest of the month. So you're taking that away with their Wednesday services, as it is. And now, all the other events that we put in, well, they're going to be washed away because, again, the service is taking up all the parking that we have downtown. You can protect them, but then what about the rest of us? What about all the mom-and-pop businesses down there? There's no protection for us? Like, oh, well, go on your way, you lose? I don't think that's very fair, and I think you need to consider us, who are trying to make a living down there.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to speak? I gave you extra time, so we're going to move on. We'll have discussion and motion with council at this time. Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I just would like to say, I mean, our downtown is just finally catching its rhythm again and opening back up after all the struggles, COVID and construction and everything. I know with CBD-one, there's no parking requirements, but there's already struggles with parking, especially when there's events downtown. We have one monthly market a month right now. I would love to have a monthly market-sized event every Wednesday night downtown, and I would love to have events every Saturday and Sunday downtown. And I hope there is going to be more. I think our entertainment district and our downtown has a very bright future. I just, I wish that there was a way that our economic development team could work with this organization. I'm sure they do great things to maybe find a place that might better suit this type of organization because we do have a lot of hard-working businesses that deserve protection downtown as well. So that would be my only comment.
Thank you, Rob. Any other comments from councilmembers? For me personally, this is a legal dilemma that we're in, and we have to make a, you know, when I laid my hand on the Bible sworn in this office, I didn't, I made a promise to do what was legally. And so so many of our decisions are legal decisions. For me, this is a legal decision, and I would have to support it. Mr. Manzares, do you have any other counsel for us?
No, sir. It's, I think you've hit the nail on the head right there. The president is in favor of approving this item.
Could I entertain a motion for adoption of this resolution? I'll make a motion from the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
No.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
No.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye. Motion fails. Do you have any other counsel for us? We'll move on.
I just wanted to clarify, then, the issue that those who opposed the motion was related to parking?
Thank you. Your motion fails. Sorry, your request. Let me find out where I'm at here. Madam Clerk, please read item number four into the record.
Public hearing for resolution number 2023-108R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2022-188R, which adopted the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget for the City of St. Cloud. Finding the city manager has certified our prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, interim finance director. For a moment there, I thought I'd been replaced by our community development director. I'm totally fine with it, but I'll spare you. This is budget amendment number four. The background is as usual as per city code, 2-212, amendments after adoption. A, if during the fiscal year, the manager certifies that there are available for appropriation revenues in excess of those estimated in the budget, the city council may by resolution make supplemental appropriation for the year up to the amount of each excess. In this case, the city manager has certified funds are available to appropriate funds. This budget amendment meets the city's strategic goal for financial sustainability. First, we have the Community Development Block Grant Fund, which is new to us this fiscal year. It has an increase of $427,137. This is to increase revenue from community block grants by $427,137 and increase expenditures for professional services for the same amount to fund the agreement with the Osceola Council of Aging for Housing Rehabilitation. I believe this agreement will come to you during the next city council meeting. Capital Projects Fund, increase of $1,679,936. This is increased revenue from interfund transfer by $1,679,936. Increased expenditures for contractual services by $679,936 and increased expenditures for land right-of-way and easements by $1 million for the following. Downtown parking that we just spoke of. We do have a project to address that situation moving forward, PW 2202. So the, the $679,936 is going into that project from the CRA fund, from prior year fund balance. And ST 2310, Lillian Lee Road. Just a note on this one, the amount slightly different than the original agenda, had $679,715. That has been updated since the original agenda came out. The prior year fund balance for the CRA fund ended up being the $221 more than originally thought. The next page of Capital Projects Fund, we're increasing expenditures for interfund transfers by $4,059,821, decreasing expenditures for professional services by $299,174 and contractual services by $3,76647 for the closure of the following projects. PW 1702 Stevens Road North Expansion and PW 1703 Mutter Road Extension. Those projects that were originally established for mobility fee funds aren't happening, so the funding is being returned to the mobility fee fund. Here's your mobility impact fee fund. It has an increase of the $4,059,821. Increased revenue from interfund transfer by that amount, increased expenditures for intergovernmental transfers for $1 million for the project ST 2310, the Lillian Lee Road Right-of-Way, and increased contingency expenditures by $3,059,821 to account for the return of funding from the closed projects that I just mentioned. Community redevelopment agencies, the CRA fund has an increase of $679,936. This is to use prior year fund balance and transfer it to the Capital Projects Fund for the parking project PW 2202. As required by the CRA, any fund balance at the end of the year has to be dedicated to a specific project in the downtown area. So that is what the CRA chose to do this particular year. Staff recommendation is approval of resolution 2023-108R, and city council requested action is approval of resolution number 2023-108R. And if you have any questions, Melissa will be happy to answer them. Not really.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. I just have a few questions. It's Laura Kensevich. I'm at 1036 Pennsylvania Avenue in downtown St. Cloud. A few questions, just.
Could you step up closer to the mic?
Sorry. Is it public record to see what the total funds are for some of the projects that are getting these increases or decreases in funding?
You have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Answer the questions, yes.
Yes.
I was going to say, I'm not a public records expert, but I would say yes. I will be more than happy to give it.
Absolutely. Mr. Manzares, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, could I have discussion in our motion by council?
Motion to approve.
We have motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to item number five, that was moved from the consent agenda, resolution number 2023-105R. Could you please read that into the record?
If you could spare me just a moment, sir. As related to the ACFR, I would like to publicly recognize my staff that are directly responsible for that. Suzette Cover is our comptroller, Gloria Emanuel, senior accountant, Donna Cooley, senior accountant, and Leslie Messina, accountant. They're the ones primarily responsible for making this happen and keeping our 20-plus year run of awards running, so I just wanted to take a moment to make sure they were recognized publicly.
Thank you, and we do appreciate all of them and their excellent work. Thank you. Now, would you please read item number five?
Resolution number 2023-105R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for the children care, childcare center in the HB Highway Business Zoning District on the 10.28 parcel of land on Lot 3, Building G, located south of East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway, east of Lake Oak Boulevard, and west of Tay West Drive, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. For a moment there, I thought I was the interim finance director, but you do not want me to be that because I barely passed my master's course in public financial management. So the case before you tonight is for a conditional use for St. Cloud Marketplace. They are requesting a conditional use for a childcare center. The property, the property is zoned highway business, the future land use is commercial. A childcare center requires a conditional use permit in the highway business zoning district. Staff has reviewed this request and found that there are no adverse impacts on city facilities. Okay, here are graphic representations of the future land use map and zoning maps depicting the commercial land use and the highway business zoning district for context. Here's the concept plan that shows Building G on Lot 3, and that's the location that's being requested to have the childcare center. The proposed request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff reviewed this request for a conditional use on or before May 22, 2023, and staff recommends approval with conditions of resolution number 2023-105R for a conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the Land Development Code. After planning commission, staff reevaluated this request and added a couple conditions of approval. I'll go ahead and read those for the record. The first one is the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan as a site plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. And number two, the approval of the requested childcare center conditional use is limited to Lot 3, Building G with a maximum building square footage of 10,000 square feet, as shown in Exhibit B of the resolution, and we also updated the resolution to reflect that language. Okay? So it is requested that city council approve this request, and at this time, staff and the applicant's agent is available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item? Just do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Carlos Perro, Kimley Horn, 189 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1000. I'm here representing the applicant, who's also the developer of RB Partners, and we agree with staff's recommendation for approval and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll stand by. Will receive any public comment at this time? Mr. Jeff Shepler has requested to speak. Please state your name and address once again for the record.
Sure. My name is Jeff Shepler. Live at 2209 Spring Lake Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I'm representing my wife as well as my parents, Lloyd and Nancy Shepler, at 2191 Spring Lake Circle. Just some, there's some questions. What is the enrollment capacity of the, of the daycare and the ages? And will the access be grant come from Live Oak Boulevard, or will it be accessed from Highway 192? If it's Live Oak Boulevard, traffic a couple of times a day already gets backed up south, south on Hickory Tree Road to the curve south of Mash Myers. It's not uncommon for cars to be cleared down around the curve, and people don't regard the signs that say, "Do not block the intersection." In fact, there's two signs there, I believe, and they don't look at it. We're, we're sitting there. So if more cars are coming out on Live Oak Lane, which is the way I could see that people will be coming, it's not going to be, and it's, and that would be drop-off time and pickup time, which are already the busy times. So that's something for you to think about. Let's see. And then addressing that property, that's not initially related to this, but it's something you guys all need to be aware of, is the other day, there were 10 to 15 cars parked in the grass along Live Oak Boulevard with the development of the St. Cloud Marketplace. The workers there don't have any place to park. The city needs to maybe make arrangements for them to park on their own property, you know, the property that's being worked on. So I, you know, I'm not for or against it. I guess the only good thing is, is we wouldn't have any sexual predators living in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to address, I saw the cars parked on the grass, or actually parked in the right-of-way and on someone else's property. I, I personally saw it. I contacted the Public Works Department. They have not been back since that. They went immediately, graded a portion of their site, and they've moved the vehicles onto their site.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I know, I know what you're talking about with the traffic, and I fought the connection to Live Oak, but that site plan has been approved. And I wanted to ask the city manager, the, we did get a traffic circulation plan at the time when, when all this was going in. Does this development, is it consistent with what they were proposing? You know, as far as traffic counts and circulation and things like that?
I'm going to look at my planning director, I believe so, but I would need to rely on her.
Right. And I don't know if the applicant would like to add to this, but they will be required to do their traffic impact analysis. They will also be required to meet the parking requirements for this use. They have onsite circulation around the building, in the drive aisle, but they expect that parents will park to drop off their children and not sit in a line like a school would. But I'll let the applicant elaborate on that.
Well, I guess my question was more, it seems like there needs to be a holistic traffic impact analysis for the whole site with like proposed uses in it, not piecemeal, like everybody coming in and doing something. So I'm, I believe we had a traffic impact analysis at the time this came in, and so my question is, does it, does it follow that?
Yes. Yes, the, the traffic impact analysis that was provided, you know, as part of this project and the planning and the SDP and everything, all addressed this and took it into account of it being a daycare. It took it into account the number of students and the number of staff, and it, and it did look at it holistically as the whole marketplace, including the proposed use on Lot 1, the, what the proposed use would be for Lot 2, and looking at not just our site, but the intersections in the surrounding area.
And did somebody answer, and I just didn't hear it? How many, what was the enrollment? I know he asked that question.
Yes, we're estimating about 90 students.
And the ages?
It's a daycare, so I think anywhere from, I'm not exactly sure, but I would assume somewhere in the infant to five-year-old range. It's not a, it's not a school, so it's just a daycare center.
Right. And Ms. Dunklin might be able to elaborate on this. I had this conversation with Mr. Tomac. But ultimately, when everything gets developed across the frontage, ultimately, because I know the problem you have trying to pull out on Hickory Tree Road, they don't stop, and I actually asked the county to put the signs up because you can't get out, you know, and, and now the bus is in there, and it's just kind of a mess. But Mr. Tomac explained to me, like, when this east-west road fully gets developed and goes all the way across, that's going to give them access to a light to be able to go through and come up, and so it should ease ultimately. I mean, how many years is that down the road? I don't have the answer. But ultimately, that should help with the overall traffic analysis. I don't know, Ms. Dunklin might have a more eloquent description.
You are correct on that there. Everything you said is correct, so I don't know what else to add to that. Thank you.
Do we have further discussion by council? If not, could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
There are no further council action items. Mr. Manzares, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, mayor, thank you.
Our city manager, Ms. Miller.
Yes, two things. First, I had the opportunity to attend the Osceola County Police Memorial Service that was held at Osceola County. Our police department, Kissimmee, and the sheriff's office participated, and it was a wonderful service, so I just wanted to recognize that, recognize the officers that we've lost in Osceola County. So it was a nice service. Additionally, on your, at your seats this evening, there was two pieces of paper. At the last council meeting, we discussed what we've been calling the M-word marketing for the downtown. And so you have a plan that has been recommended by our Economic Development Department. It includes Orlando Weekly, Spectrum ads, radio ads, Osceola News Gazette, and Osceola Star ads. With that, there's some scenarios on the cost. Those in green are what the recommendation is, which would be a six-month total of $132,000 or $22,000 a month, if that is what the city council wants to move forward with. The cheapest option was a six-month cost of $84,984. If we receive the direction from council that this is the way you want us to go, I will make the funds available.
Mr. Manzares, is this something we can act on tonight and approve?
Well, when, I think she's just looking at direction to, so I think that's what we're looking at.
I just want to be clear of what we're doing here.
Right. So each of these, we would have already our existing contracts, or we would be entering into contracts, so none of them are going to be more than $50,000, so they would be under my authority to approve. I potentially would have to transfer some money around that I'm able to do also, that you receive on those wonderful emails where you see that we've moved, moved funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I don't know if council's had time to look at it, because I know it just, I just saw it when I got here today, but the one that was the most fascinating to me is this Orlando Weekly local culture creative. With this, they use your mobile devices, and they can do geo-fencing, which I didn't even know was a thing, and they can like target like who goes to what areas, and they gather their data, and they go, I didn't even know that was. And they can like target, like who goes to what areas, and they gather their data, and they go, I didn't even know that was a thing. So that's the most fascinating one to me that I would really like to explore. The other ones, I just feel like a super old-school, like the radio, who listens to the radio, you know, the newspaper. No one reads the newspaper.
Us old people.
I just, I don't know. Like, to me, I just feel like, meh. Like, those don't seem like, I mean, I know, like, in the, one of the news gazette was saying, you know, maybe they would just reserve it for special events, which I'm okay with that. But to me, I'm like, the whole digital aspect of it, to me, seems like the most innovative way to capture people, and they'd actually see it. Like, I mean, what, who really reads ads? And, you know, it's just kind of noise, but that's my personal opinion. And then the other question I had, and I asked this when I first got on council, like, why we don't have like an email blast that goes out? Like, why we don't collect email addresses and send out things? Because at the time, I was working in downtown Kissimmee, and I would constantly get things from like Vintage Vino and all these other things. Hey, here's the events. Here's what's going on. You know, I'd get this like weekly email. And at the time, I asked, which isn't Mary Emma, so she might tell me a completely different thing. But at the time, we had all these emails in our database, but we didn't collect them in a way that would allow us to email with that kind of stuff. But are we working on a process to get, you know, because stuff happens to me. You see your email, and you're like, oh, hey, there's a thing this weekend. Like, that reaches me more than putting an ad in a newspaper, because I don't really read the newspaper. I do everything digitally, and I don't really look at the sides, so.
Mary Emma, Bachelor Communications Director slash M-word person for the last two weeks. To answer your question, we do collect that information through our website. Parks and Rec uses it pretty extensively for people that want to keep up with Parks and Rec's events. In a lot of ways, the whole email blast thing is pretty old-school also. I mean, we can do whatever council directs us to do.
It's free, though. You know, it's a free option that you could do and-
Right, right. And to your point about liking the Orlando Weekly thing, I learned a whole lot in the last two weeks about all that stuff, too. I think Doug probably knows more about it than I did. But we, the reason that I presented the numbers and, and Internet and I actually sat down and went over these and presented the numbers the way we did is because we wanted council to have the opportunity to have that kind of à la carte approach, where if you want us to just do this, or just do this and this, do whatever you guys want to do. So that's why we broke out the numbers that way, so we could get clear direction on how you want the city to proceed.
So I have one more question for you since you're up here. Is there a more robust Orlando Weekly slash Local Culture Creative than the best category? So like, I don't know how my other councilmembers feel, and we'll hear from them. Like, that's the most fascinating one to me. I feel like, let's do that. And the other ones, I'm like, I'm not sure that that's gonna get really.
It's all very scalable, and what you're paying for and buying is your impressions and that type of thing. So to answer your question, yes, we could spend more. My recommendation on that would be to start at-
To start.
-that level, and if we see good return, we can choose to increase it if, if we're looking to expand our area or hit different targets and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, Councilmember Matheny had some really good points. I just want to say, my, my very limited marketing education through UCF Business School, we talked about how, when you're building your brand, which I guess we're trying to rebuild our downtown brand here. It takes kind of marketing on all different aspects, so there's still a lot of, I don't want to say the older demographic, but some people who still listen to radio and TV and newspapers and things like that, so I do think it's important to do some of that. But I do like the, the digital aspect of doing things. I would also like to look into like social media advertising, maybe using the use of influencers or whatever they're called these days, or something like that, but I think that's, that's a great start.
If I could address that real quick, we've talked internally about the influencer things. There's a lot of pros and a lot of cons. And what we're kind of thinking about doing is we're close to getting an intern and having the intern who's a 20, it's a college student, so she's 20-something. Have somebody like that go do it. I know Experienced Kissimmee is doing some of that with some people, and it gives them good kind of quick-hit little short videos that, and there's a lot of, of good businesses downtown that I think a lot of people have no idea are there, so, you know, we could have that person kind of pop in and be like, hey, here's this cool, you know, arcade, or what have you, so.
Cool. Sounds good.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Councilmember Urban said exactly, I was thinking, I've worked with Experienced Kissimmee on a board I'm at, and their influencers had brought in a lot of following, and I know it's worldwide and, and, and things like that, but they just brought them into the attraction. They talked about it on their influence, and the reaction was phenomenal for the dollar spent. I was amazed, because I didn't know that people came in to influence. I'm not, I'm the newspaper guy every day and AM radio guy every day. So I'm not that guy, but it influenced things. I, it does work, and I've seen it at the bigger scale with Osceola County, and they have used it and has been successful, so. And then also, this is à la carte, right? This is soup to nuts. This isn't buy one, get one free. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Fletcher?
I just want to say thank you to staff for putting this together, because I know it's something that the entire council has wanted to do for the downtown businesses. Regarding the, the Orlando Weekly and the Local Culture Creative, I agree with other councilmembers that that's a great, that's a great one. And also, I wanted to touch on the Spectrum commercials. They do go across all platforms. So if you're watching from a mobile device or, or tied up somehow to Spectrum, the advertisement will still splash. It's not-
Correct.
It's really just old-school TV. And then I would like to see some Facebook marketing, social media marketing, some sponsored ads, I think, would actually be. I would rather spend money on sponsored Facebook ads than actually the Gazette or the Star. I think that would be good, using the intern to possibly showcase some of the downtown businesses and then run those as, as sponsored ads in the area. It's actually, I think, the conversion of the amount of exposure that you're gonna get based on geographical location would be a lot higher. But I think you guys have done a great job putting this together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So what else do you need at this point?
I think the direction was Orlando Weekly. I think I saw nodding with the sponsored Facebook ads.
Yes.
I don't think I got consensus on the other items.
I think the Spectrum would certainly be something to look at.
All right. I saw three, I saw three on Spectrum. Okay.
All right.
And then we'll, you know, we can always add more as additional events come.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Somebody mentioned the influencers, too. I thought that was a good idea. I don't know if you got that on-
I think we said we were gonna use our intern for that.
So-
Or we were gonna try, but if not, we will find. I'll, I take pictures of my food, and I share it on Facebook.
Mary Emma, I wanted to ask you, sorry. So you guys will be analyzing the metrics, right? Like, so, you know, we're not gonna just blindly go, we're doing six months of this. You're gonna be looking every month and going like, this is working, or that's not, or whatever.
And that's the beautiful thing with this, is we get live dashboards, and we get really good metrics back on the impressions that we're getting and those types of things, so, so we can tell you how many people are getting the ads. There's gonna be some anecdotal stuff that, to my knowledge, we can't track. The increase in businesses down, you know, in, in traffic downtown and so forth, and when I say traffic, I don't mean cars, I mean people coming to businesses and so forth. But I am not aware of a good way to track that, communications girl.
I can tell you, our parking lot is more full since we reopened downtown. Staff on a regular basis cannot find a parking space. We are now incentivizing. We have drawings for our employees to go park at the, the lot down the street. We have a walking initiative trying to get everybody to walk. It rains every single time, every, every day, though. So I'm having a hard time getting them to walk multiple blocks, but I would say if our parking lot is a gauge, that's it. I also opened up that competition to Toho Water and to the tax collector. And I, and I did tell the tax collector that after the incentive is over, that I need his employees to just start parking over there.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Same thing that Councilwoman Matheny had said. I, when we do go to, to launch all this stuff, I would like to see the, the metrics, so that if it's not working, we can like, you know, pull a plug and ship it around.
Yeah, Internet and I actually had a conversation about that, and she would be presenting to you information on a quarterly or whatever basis you guys wanted, information on those, on those metrics, so, yeah, because I'm with you, and I don't want to just be throwing money out there and hoping, fingers crossed, that, that it's having an impact. And if I could drop back for a moment to the conversations about social media advertising, a lot of what we would be doing through Orlando Weekly and, and that group, regardless of what platform they're on, they're gonna be getting our ads if they're in these targeted things that we can, and again, we can geo-fence anywhere we want to. I think one council member had mentioned, oh, we should advertise like at Country Thunder or at OHP when they come. I don't mean to sound like creepy stalker girl, and when they were telling me about this, I was like, I feel like creepy stalker girl right now, but we can actually identify who was at Country Thunder last year and send advertising to their phone. So again, and we can do that with people who are there this year. You know, you're in town for this thing, come downtown to eat and play, so.
Is that just for Country Thunder, or the meet them or something like that?
We, we can geo-fence any event.
That's good.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I'm not a marketing person either, but what if on your advertisement, you say, mention this ad for a special prize or whatever? Like, like you get City of St. Cloud swag, and you give it to all the stores, and they get a City of St. Cloud umbrella, or a City, you know, like whatever that would be. I would say give like a 5% discount, but then we would need to find the funds to give to the business to reimburse them. But I mean, I don't know if there's any like City of St. Cloud, a City of St. Cloud coffee mug. They don't know what it is. Mention this ad for a special gift or something. Then that way, you could kind of track how they found out. I don't know.
I mean, yeah, we'd have to-
Like tie it actually to a sale?
You could work with the chamber. They, like, they could start at the chamber, right? So stop by the chamber or something to get a swag bag or something? And then, and then they could actually-
Track it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, too. I got, I got a, I stayed at Holiday Inn Express. Got my marketing degree there.
We had stamps from Montgomery Ward, and we got those, and you fill out your stamp form, and you can get food press.
You got a set of dishes?
That's for reading the paper and AM radio.
I just want to thank Mary Emma.
Thank you, Mary Emma.
Not, not her, her favorite task, and she spent a lot of time researching options and costs, and, you know, we wanted to bring you something tonight versus having it continue to wait, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gilbert?
Coop, can you send me those names again? I'd like to recognize them, but when you were talking, I didn't get them, so if you could send those to me, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for all the hard work and the great job you all did.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I would just like to say I had the opportunity today to tour Water Treatment Plant 4 with the Toho Water crew, and it's really amazing all the, the, the money that they're dumping into that plant and the things that they're doing there to ensure continued quality to our residents. And just the Toho crew is doing a lot of amazing things, so just wanted to mention that, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone it's Memorial Day weekend and spend some time thinking about those people who served in the military and, and paid the ultimate sacrifice, and we are soldier cities, so I know we always appreciate and, and respect our veterans. Thank you.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Mayor, I have no comments this evening.
That's it?
That's it.
And I don't have anything new other than the information in the report section. Monday, May the 29th, city offices will be closed in observance of the Memorial Day holiday, and there will be a wreath laying ceremony at the city- That's at 10:00 AM in the morning. Thursday, June the 1st, need to correct that date, there will be a CRA meeting at 6 o'clock here at City Hall, Council Chambers, Thursday, June the 8th. There will be a city council meeting at 6:30 PM at Council Chambers. Issued a proclamation in recognition of National EMS Week, and I had the opportunity of meeting with our- proclamation and thank them on behalf of the city council for their hard work and the difference that they make, saving lives and, and making a difference in our community. Warrant list number 11 is available for your review. There's no other items on our agenda, so we will be adjourned. We need to take a brief break, and then we have an ethics training session.